Okay, welcome everyone. Apologize for the delay in getting started here tonight. We were a little overrun in committee of the whole. But, welcome to our council meeting for October the 20th. Over to you, common clerk.
The first item, deputy mayor, would be the land acknowledgement.
Land acknowledgement. I think I'll do that tonight. The land on which the city of St. John or Mennequist is situated is a traditional territory of the Wolasteweeck. The Wolasteweeck, along with their indigenous neighbors, the Mi'kmaq and Peskotamaquadi, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and resources. Let's take a moment to think about that, please. Thank you. Next item, common clerk.
And next, we'll ask everyone to stand for the national anthem.
Thank you. Next item, common clerk.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item 2.1, approval of minutes from October the 6th.
Okay, get a motion to approve minutes from October 6th. Councillor Harris, Councillor Darling on the question? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
And next is item 3, approval of the agenda. And there's two additions to request, add those on. 17.1 would be recommendation from committee of the whole with respect to appointments to committees. And 17.2, sale of 608 Millage Avenue. And the third thing is a request to remove item 10.1 from the agenda, the Sydney Street bylaw amendment, and staff requesting to bring that back at a later date.
Okay, get a motion to approve as amended. Councillor Ogden, Councillor Darling on the question? All in favor? Opposed if any? Motion carried. Next item, common clerk.
And next, disclosures of conflict of interest, if we have any.
Not seeing any. Next item.
And next item is...
Oh, Councillor Reddick? Oh, sorry.
Yes, deputy, I just need to abstain from 10.2. I was out with a stomach flu last meeting, so I can't vote on that one. 10.2.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right. Next item, common clerk.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
Would you, Councillor Sullivan?
Move 5.1 through 5.8 inclusive.
Okay, second. Councillor Killen on the question? Councillor Lowe?
Yeah, I'd like to pull 5.3. And we can talk about it right now.
5.3?
Yeah.
You can talk about it right now if you like.
The...I got no problem appointing assistant building inspector. But I got a problem when it says he can work, like, part-time as unsightly premise and dangerous buildings. Like, I feel that the time is...we had one, we still have one, we had another one, and she got another job within the city. Therefore, I think that, like, we definitely need somebody more than one person to do it. We had two going, then we reduced to one, and now we're getting a assistant building inspector who this guy sometime can help with the unsightly premises. We need full-time people to do the job.
Okay. I'll turn that over. Excuse me? Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and through you too, councillor Lowe. Thank you councillor for the question. And certainly at the September 22nd meeting of council, when councillors provided their feedback around the budget process, there was definitely an interest shared for enhanced bylaw enforcement. And, you know, there's always lots to do, as there is in many departments, but as a result of that discussion, we are going to be proposing two new permanent positions in that area to enhance the bylaw enforcement service. So, that's something that you're going to see in the budget, proposed budget coming to you later this month or next month, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councillor Reddick?
Thank you, deputy. Through you, maybe to CAO and McGovern, I'm just wondering for 5.1, housing for all strategy, have we looked at any sort of amenities that would be added into the yellow zones? Has there been any movement on that? We had kind of had conversation about potential bathrooms, and obviously we already do garbage pickup in many sites, but maybe running water, that sort of thing. So, just wondering if there's been any movement there, if the province has stepped up maybe to help?
Absolutely, through your worship, councillor. So, that's...those are discussions we continue to have. I'd say there's interest from the province in terms of supporting us. It's really around working through and defining exactly what we want. So, as transitions happen and the new green zone comes online a month early, we had homes arriving here over the past week to set up the new 28 units. We'll move a lot of additional people out of tents into the green zone. And then through the winter months, begin planning so that we're able to have the wraparound services, additional services identified for the spring, so that they can be rolled out. So, those discussions will happen, and we'll be looking for financial support from the province in order to enable that.
Is there any hope of any of that happening before the winter? Because I think moving people into these sites, I mean, they should be really moved into a site that would have something better than where they've come from. And that was kind of part of my goal, is I want people to have, you know, some necessities looked after, like running water and washrooms. Is there any sort of timeline in them getting back to you before the winter?
So, it'll really be expansion, looking at expansion of existing shelter beds to ensure there's sufficient capacity combined with the opening of the new green zone. Those components, and I'm looking at the team members here, are really what's being advanced at this point in time, knowing that it will take some time for siting as well as servicing. You can imagine water, wastewater connections being put into place and those sorts of things all happening. So, there are alternative actions being taken for this winter with the wraparound or expanded yellow zone would happen in the spring of next year.
I appreciate that, Mr. McGovern. Biggest thing is, I'm hoping that the province is going to step up and maybe we can get some porta-potties and running some sort of water. Even if it's not running water, we could probably have some sort of big bottles of water out there so that people are able to live in a more hygienic way. This is just a bare necessity is basically. And it's something that probably could be done before the spring. And if not, I fear that we're going to see a lot more fires happening and things like that. So, I'm hopeful that the province is going to step up and help the city with this.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Ogden?
Yeah, getting back to what Jerry was talking to with Amy. I've been involved with painting hundreds of homes for 30 years and putting in front steps for people who can't afford it. And it's really getting to the point where we've got landlords, and it's not the majority of landlords, but we've got landlords that no matter what you do, they...and Amy, you know this, no matter what we do, we can't get them to fix up their property. And, you know, food banks were up to 16 food banks now. When I started, we had one or two. So, the level of poverty in the city has grown, and we have the oldest housing stock in the country. But we have people holding on to homes that just refuse to put any money in. And Mark O'Leary, who I grew up with, who was the guy that does this, ex-cop and everything, he does a wonderful job, but he's out there on his own. And we really do need two or three people who are not going to say no and get these homes fixed up. I mean, I've been in homes where there's no insulation, 90-year-old people, and where we put doors into people just so that they...and it's gone on for years. And we fund everything ourselves, but we've raised millions. But the thing is, it's getting to the point where if somebody could just be stepped on, because we do have people who just refuse to absolutely do anything to their property, and they'll thumb their nose at you. And Mark's really good at what he does, but boy, does he need help in this city. We're not Fredrickton and Moncton. You know, our wages are lower, and we have much more poverty, and our educational level's much lower. So, we need people who are going to help us. And we need...Mark O'Leary, and Jerry and I have talked about this a number of times, we both have a lot of...as yourself, deputy, I have a lot of low-income people living in firetraps. And we've got to get some help in there with Mark O'Leary. So, if, Amy, you say going to come out in the budget, that's fine with me. And Kevin, I hope that you'll adhere to that, and let's put some money in, because we've got people who are going to bed. One guy told me the other night that he had woke up with ice on his sleeping bag.
Okay. We got the message. Councillor Ogden, clear? Councillor Harris?
Thank you.
Thank you, deputy. I'm glad we are all agreeing that speculation is the cash cow of the real estate and investment industry that runs this entire country, because we've been talking about that for a number of years. And it is. And when it comes to this point around bylaw enforcement, we've talked a bit about the stick, but the city has a carrot that no other city has called the Revitalizing Housing Stock Fund. And I firmly believe, Jerry, to your point, and councillor Ogden to your point, we've got people who are bad actors. And the carrot that is enticing other people to come in, take up this property, and do something positive with it, isn't large enough, but we have the bones of something that can run that, and I think that's our Revitalizing Housing Stock Fund. And I'll just to revisit that, it's the only fund of its kind in New Brunswick, because as you said councillor Ogden, we're the only city that has the dilapidation levels that we do per capita in our housing stock in this province. So, I think we do have the bones. I think it's just an encouragement more or less to you, Amy, to consider both that stick and that enforcement. We need the enforcement, but if there's people who are sitting on unsightly premises, abandoned housing stock, and they do not have the Capitol Highway to travel down through the financial sector or through the housing sector, municipally or provincially, it's not going to get done. So, we've got to do both in tandem. And I think we do have some of those bones already in place to get it done. We maybe need some more meat, but I appreciate the conversation.
Okay, thank you councillor. Do we have a motion on the floor now? So, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Next item, common clerk.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number six, members' comments.
Members' comments. Councillor Sullivan, start us off.
Thanks, your worship. Council would recognize that about a month ago or so, we all received an email from Sherry McCaver, who was looking for ward meetings and accessibility to council. Following a brief conversation with her, I understood really her concern was she and some friends had gotten together and wanted to know more about what we do and wanted to have access to us. And I said, "Well, why don't you just invite me to a coffee?" And it's that easy. And so, she invited me out for a Diet Pepsi, and she and a handful of her buddies put me on the hot seat for an evening, and we had a wonderful conversation about red, yellow, and green zones. That only took about 45 minutes to explain, because as we know, it can't be explained in a Facebook post or a two-minute email. Had a lovely short conversation about water meters that they brought up, and they were 100% in favor, nudge, nudge, staff. We talked about barriers on the Reversing Falls Bridge, and how the city, it's our policy, and we are ever hopeful the province will do that. We talked about speed pillows and photo radar. It was a very wide-ranging conversation. And they bought my Diet Pepsi on the promise that I would do two things at tonight's council meeting. One is report back and encourage councillors, and I said, "It's an easy one, because they will all do it." But because I told them I would do it, when somebody reaches out, "Go for a coffee," and I know that will happen, and the folks who are watching, if you want to have a conversation with your councillor, it is that simple. Invite them for a coffee. And I guess the second piece is just that, to do the advertising for anybody who wants to have access to a councillor. Face-to-face conversations are so much better than an email exchange, than a couple of quips on social media. A lot can get done at a local coffee shop, or in this case, Westside AJ's. Shout out. Hashtag.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Reddick?
Thank you, deputy. Couple of things are coming up. Actually, the Sophia Recovery Centre breakfast is happening Friday, the 24th, at 7:30, the 24th of October, that is, at the Delta. Sophia Recovery Centre does a whole bunch of wonderful different initiatives that they have to help people stay sober, and I'm a strong believer in what they do. We also have a powwow coming, actually, October 25th at TD Station from 10 to 6:00. It was amazing last year, so I highly encourage people to go. It is a free event, and the organizers did such a fabulous job last year. Lastly, I wanted to mention that we still have the arts grants available, and there hasn't been a whole lot of applicants yet, but applications are coming in. The deadline for the applications is October 26th. And if anybody is not sure how to apply, or you need to ask questions to staff, feel free to reach out to me, and I'll get you connected or send you the online application. Very easy to do, but once again, October 26th is the deadline.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Ogden?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the artists. We painted our last mural for the season. On the last four weekends, Saturday, we were there 12 hours, eight artists. I don't include myself, I can't paint. And...but we've had 1,600 artists over the years paint 240 murals, which I think is a record in at least Atlantic Canada. And we did, from our Ukrainian friends, we did sunflowers on Main Street. And Lisa, I noticed you used that in your promotion of the Main Street project. And anyway, I want to thank them, because all the paint is donated. These people come out Saturday. I told them I can't do Sunday, so we came out, and I think we worked 12 hours on Saturday. And so, that will be it for the murals for the season. And of course, the marigolds were done in June. But I just want to thank all those artists. We have a big art community in St. John that's very old, you know, Miller-Britten and everything. And I just would encourage people, when they want to do murals or anything like that, just look out to St. Johners. We have a lot to be proud of in this city. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. I just got a couple of things here. First of all, we have growth at a glance. In October, we received 22 building and development-related permit applications with a total of 6.3 million. And year-to-date, we've received 589 permit applications with a total of $308 million. So far, we've had one high-value permit, which is 400 University Avenue, that's the St. John Regional Hospital, at $4.1 million. Bring your attention to that you can help shape the future of the North End. Tuesday, October 28th, there'll be two open houses, one at the Nick Nicole Community Center, 1 till 4:00, and the other one at the Lord Beaverbrook Rink, 6 to 8:30. So, anybody that wants to attend those and help shape the future of the North End, they're certainly welcome to attend. And again, I would repeat what councillor Reddick said, the Mennequist Powwow is happening again this year, and, you know, it's this Saturday, October 25th. It was a real blast last year. People loved it. So, if you can get out, I'd suggest you go Saturday. The grand entry is at 12 o'clock, and it's free to everybody to go. Thank you. Next item, common clerk.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have two presentations scheduled. So, the first is item 8.1 on the agenda, and this is a presentation by Envision St. John, and I understand we have CEO Andrew Beckett and Tricia Perry, board chair, here to present.
Okay. Welcome.
Good evening, deputy mayor, councillors, all of the dedicated city staff I see in the room this evening. My name is Tricia Perry. I am the Chair of the Board of Directors of Envision St. John. And my esteemed colleague, Andrew Beckett, whom you're all familiar with, agreed to give me a few minutes of my time just to give some introductory remarks, extend a greeting to you all, and to thank you for making time on your agenda to allow us to give a brief presentation this evening. Just for some context, Envision St. John is overseen by a board of directors. I, as I said, I'm the current chair of that. I'm supported by 10 other directors, all of whom were appointed based on their skills and experience. We are lucky to have very broad representation throughout our region. And I also wanted to let you know, actually, that we have a current vacancy on our board, and within the next eight months, we'll have another two. And so, if you know of community leaders that are, you know, take economic development as seriously as we do, then certainly send them our way for consideration. So, as you likely know, the agency is now in its sixth year of operation, if you can believe it or not. And so, we matured to a place where it was time for the agency to have a robust strategic plan. So, that plan was informed, it was adopted this past June by the agency, so it was informed by the experience of our first year, five years of an operation, which you can imagine there was all kinds of learning opportunities in those first five years. But it's also been largely supported by what I would say are three other very important strategic pillars that support the work of the agency. And that was the development of the regional economic development strategy, our regional immigration strategy, and our master tourism plan. And so, as part of those processes, mayors and senior staff from all of the municipalities in the region were consulted, and our plan was developed as a result. And so, this evening, you're going to have a brief presentation by Mr. Beckett that walks you through our strategic plan and some of our key initiatives and priorities over the next couple of years. Thank you.
Evening, deputy, members of council. Could be one of the few times I'm introduced as esteemed. I'm not sure that necessarily fits, but we'll see. Very quickly, wanted to run through the strategic plan. I should say, the full plan is available on our website for people to go through. Also provided council with a one-pager that gives you a summary of the plan, and you also have a document that has a breakdown of our services and the various functions that we provide. So, in terms of the strategic plan, what we've gone through is first an articulation of our role, that we're the lead economic development and visitor attraction agency for the region, and that we're tasked with sustainably growing our economy and population. We can't do this work alone. It's a complex space to work in, and so, a key part of how we carry out the role is by convening different various groups to really pull together a variety of different interests in terms of trying to get different people mobilized around the actions that are needed to help drive the region forward. In terms of our mission, we drive strategic, robust, sustainable economic growth, attracting visitors, people, business, and investment to the St. John region while enhancing our enviable quality of life. And I think that's one that we find increasingly important when we're talking to prospective investors to this region. The quality of life that we enjoy in this region is something that is very much looked upon favorably through investment traction side of things. For our vision, Envision St. John unites the voices, values, and vision of our community, serving as the trusted steward of the St. John region's economic evolution and shared success. So, again, we do take that whole notion of sustainable growth very seriously and not looking at growth at any cost. We're trying to find the right growth that fits with the community and enhances our community going forward. Under the strategic plan, we've identified four strategic pillars that we're working on over the next few years, and I'll speak to each of these in a little bit of detail, but like I said, there's more information online. And I should say, associated with these as well, we've also got, on a yearly basis, detailed action plans that we put forward that form the basis of our budget each year to help really guide the specific actions that we're going to take. So, under the first pillar, growth readiness, and what we're talking about here is looking at some fundamental transformations within the region that are needed to really sort of enhance and support the economic potential of the region. Requires what we're calling future back thinking, really imagining what's the future that we want to have in place, and then looking at the pieces that are needed to achieve that future over longer term. And that's, we focus on things like labor force, housing, healthcare, recruitment and retention, business and investment attraction, strategic real estate investment, and infrastructure development. To give you a sense of some of the things that we're working on, I've got a couple of things on the slide, but I'll speak to a couple of other ones as well. So, things like the support that we provide the local real estate development projects, whether that's the particular municipalities that are dealing with real estate development, nonprofits, private sector, we're working with, I forget the number of developers that we're working with of late, I think it's about 60, 65 developers that we're working with at any given time in terms of trying to advance their projects. We also do a lot of work to try and attract new developers to the region that may not have been here in the past. So, we're trying to build that pool out. We also, as of April 1st, help with the local immigration partnership. That's our workaround, really trying to enhance the new resident experience within the area that hopefully over time improves our retention rates around immigration. And that's, again, a key convening role in terms of bringing together a lot of different partners around immigration. Doing a lot of work right now on the airport, advocating for the airport, but also looking for ways that we can enhance air service, a key infrastructure piece that we need for business development. We've been supportive of the St. John industrial parks in terms of different work that they're doing associated with expanding their lands and different work, I would say, associated with that, too, that we're also looking at the next areas that we can look to in terms of expanding industrial lands within the region, because it's, we see opportunities if we have the land available. The one that's not on here that I also wanted to speak to just very quickly is, we're also, this whole future back side of things, we're in a time, no surprise to anybody, tremendous uncertainty in terms of global trade corridors and changes. We're trying to look at ways, where are the opportunities that are coming from within that? So, we had, we engaged David Campbell to do a bit of an exercise for us in terms of identifying some areas that were potential opportunities in terms of growth for the region. We're now taking that one step further, and we've engaged a firm out of Montreal to actually start contacting companies that are in those sectors to find out what their investment plans are, if they would consider an area like St. John, and what some of those opportunities may be. We've already had half a dozen or so leads already come from that, that we're going to be following up with ourselves and opportunities in New Brunswick. But we're trying to be aggressive in terms of going after some future opportunities in a number of areas to really capitalize on some of the uncertainty that we see at the present time. Terms of our second pillar is talent attraction and retention. I would say this is an area of great concern for us right now, even in terms of our existing workforce. With decreased immigration targets that are now in place at the federal level, we simply do not have enough people to fill the workforce requirements in this region. It's a major concern for us in terms of going forward, but that's only one layer that we're looking at. We're also very concerned about the high unemployment rate amongst our youth, and looking at how we get them into the workforce. So, there's a number of things that we're trying to look at around the talent attraction and retention. Housing plays a part in this, too, in terms of having affordable and various types of housing options available, diverse living environments and the social supports that are needed, economic opportunities, and high-quality personal and community experiences. And that's where a lot of the work that you as a municipal council play a key role in terms of some of those different things that are needed within our community to make it an attractive place to live and stay. Some of the things that we're working on, we do do an extensive number of marketing campaigns to attract and retain talent to the region. We're targeting particularly markets in Ontario that we've had past success in terms of attracting people here. Want to continue that work going forward. Workforce strategies for priority sectors, so we're working with employers within those sectors to look at how they're developing their... terms of going around to high schools and attracting students to come to their university, we're going to go out to the maritime universities and try and convince students why they should be looking at the St. John region as a place to start their careers. We've been maybe a little bit too laid back in terms of how we approach that, and we think there's some wins to be had by being more present at universities in terms of encouraging students to see this as a place to start their careers. We're looking for, we've got some partnerships already being developed with Fusion, for example, that they could do a mentorship program for some of these new students that would come to the area, and so we see some really good opportunities for some wins there. Third one is business attraction and retention. We're creating an adaptive and interconnected environment that actively nurtures business development, our business potential. So we're looking at talent access, development of innovative capacities, creation of flexible support mechanisms, navigating technological changes. AI is one, the one stark example on that one that we're doing a lot of work in a number of different ways to look at ways that businesses are starting to utilize AI. Couple of things that we've highlighted here, focus on the impact loan program and funding navigation. So we've got, we do operate the impact loan program on behalf of the city, and that's a very active piece of work that we do in terms of providing counseling and business startup support. And we've got a fund there that's funded by ACOA to provide funding up to $50,000 for startup businesses. We see three, four applications that go through the process a month, and so it's quite an active piece of work that we have involved with it. We're currently doing work on convening the energy sector in terms of looking at what they need to really sort of develop and flourish different opportunities going forward. We also do publish growth stories on an ongoing basis to really sort of showcase successes in the region and hopefully have people use that as an inspiration for future growth. Pillar four is visitor attraction, because we do provide the destination marketing functions for the area. Tourism is a vital industry for the region with tremendous opportunities for growth, and I would highlight that, tremendous opportunities for growth. Increased tourism creates a variety of economic opportunities, job creation stimulates entrepreneurial opportunities, generates revenue that supports public services and community development, and the impact of tourism creates a ripple effect that enhances quality of life for all residents. This isn't just about attracting visitors to our area, it's creating an environment that builds community pride in terms of the region that we have and what we have to offer. Some examples of some of the things that we are doing and continue to do, awareness campaigns in strategic markets, that includes, we're going heavier this year in terms of Quebec than we have in the past, Ontario, within the Maritimes as well, we get a lot of visitors to this region from within the Maritimes. And we're also in partnership with the province getting into the eastern United States as well, because with some of the things that are going on south of the border, we see a lot of opportunities to build the market from that standpoint. We do a lot of work promoting regional events. We provide sponsorship to a number of different events throughout the region to really promote those festivals and events. And we provide locals and visitors with information about the region through our visitor, our welcome centers and the like, that we've got an abundance of resources. Plus, we have an ambassador program that we do to really build out the local knowledge of what's in our region. In terms of things that we have in place to support the work that we do, Trish already mentioned the key strategic plans that we have on a regional basis to help inform our work. The Economic Development Plan, Tourism Master Plan, Local Immigration Strategy, our Talent Strategy are all key documents that we continue to work with and evolve to help inform the work that we do. We've got a whole economic intelligence and data side of things, the data dashboard that's on our website is available to provide ongoing input in terms of what's, what the economy of the region's like. Our marketing communications function is very key to getting our messaging out, and we also recognize the importance of ongoing stakeholder relations of various types in terms of doing what we do. And finally, I'm trying to blast through as quickly as possible, because I know the deputy is quite keen in terms of keeping me on time. We've moved from, in the past, we've had three measures that we focused on, we are now expanding that out to eight, because we don't think the current three, which are population, tax base, growth, and the sense of community pride, that last one a little tough to measure. So as a result of some of the consultation we've done over the past year and a half or so, we've blown that out to now eight measures that we will be reporting on on an annual basis, that really give a better, more holistic picture of what's going on within the region. And so these will be part of an annual report that we provide in terms of those key measures for the region. And with that, deputy, councillors, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sure thing, deputy, thank you. And thank you, Andrew, for coming back again. I know this is, you've done so much, there's been so much that's gone on for all of you. And I'm so pleased to see the term growth readiness incorporated into your framework. I was trying to use that a few years ago and was accused of not wanting the city to grow, which is not the case. It is about having ourselves prepared for such things. I was really interested to hear what you had to say about how there's not enough talent, but then there's all kinds of jobs. So I wonder if you can explain that a bit to me, because I know there's been a bit of a stall in our immigration framework from the federal government, so that has to affected your numbers. I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, why do we have jobs available yet folks who are unemployed at the same time, and how does immigration all tie into that? I know that's a big question.
If there was a simple answer to that one, that'd be easy. I mean, it is a tough, it's a tough message to carry when you do see unemployment levels as they are right now, and people would say, well, why do we need more people here? Look, we know from talking to, and I, again, don't, can't fully explain, and I heard some, I was part of some conversations today that even raised more concerns for me. But we've got a number of places where, I'll be very targeted on this one. If I look at the education sector and the healthcare sector, those sectors are in trouble in their challenging environments. There are people that are trained to be in those environments at a recent graduate level that don't want to go into those environments because the workplace is not a good place to be. So that doesn't help in terms of filling some of the requirements. But then you go into a whole series of other layers. We've heard from a wide variety of people in the tourism sector that are in the hospitality industries, simply cannot get people to fill some of the roles that they have. Entry-level positions that people could go into that unfortunately don't know the fully answer, but there aren't people that are willing to take those roles. Right through to then more specialized work, I hear a lot about finance, engineering-type professionals, the specialized skill sets that employers are having a tough time finding those particular skills and talents that they need to fill the roles that they have. It's a tough landscape.
No, I think that you being honest about it, though, is that first step. So it's like, what do we need to do, and how can we solve those problems? So I appreciate what you're saying there, because it's true. Maybe we don't, we're not offering enough in some of these spaces to some of these folks who are here who may want to take those positions, and how do we accommodate them and things like that? So fully appreciate you being candid, because I think we aren't going to solve the problem unless we know what it is. So, thank you.
Good, councillor Harris.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Beckett, so good to see you. It's always nice to have these conversations with you here. And every time you come, I'm always remiss that I haven't reached out to you earlier to talk about something that I'm going to raise tonight. But I think there's a number of things you touch on tonight that I would hope this body can lay, be supportive on, but also to give you some insight on. Because I think oftentimes, when we talk about some more of these global issues that download into the local, there's only just a coordination failure away from solving it, right? We haven't connected with somebody. You talk about the airport, this has been a growing initiative over the past four years that I've been, I was happy to be at the table with Sandy and Eddie Bernard when they were first talking about exploring options three years ago. And now to see it coming to fruition, obviously, you know, rest in peace, Sandy. But as you guys, as the team there is looking for a new, you know, CEO, and is going in that direction, I'm glad to see you folks at the table. The impact loan, how many of your clients, and maybe this is a quick answer, because I only have three minutes here, how many of the impact loan recipients post-five years are eligible for support from any of the bodies that put in for that? I know ACOA puts in a lot of money. I know Envision puts in some money. I know Envision does the administrative support. But it occurs to me that anybody we have at the table that's received an impact loan right now that's an entrepreneur is probably cream of the crop for surviving COVID. And there's not a lot of places, as a recipient myself who got the impact loan in 2018, I don't know of any place that I could go for a scale up, especially if you're a contractor. So I ask you that question because you may not have an answer, but as you were talking about it, that's the thought that came to me, was there's nowhere to go if you're trying to scale a construction company, or any company for that matter, and you've done the work of surviving for five years through COVID.
Yeah, there is, and look, I'll get more information, and we can feed it back. But I mean, there, the, there has been some changes made to the impact loan program now that you can apply for scaling up of an existing business, so it's not just startups. And that's where they also increased the cap, and the other important thing that was done was they increased the age side of things, because it used to be, I forget what the age was, but it was.
Under 35 or something like that.
I think it was 35, and that's now been removed, because there's the recognition that if you've spent five, seven years getting your business started, you're probably over the age limit. That's been removed. So the loan program does have more flexibility in it now. The other thing that we've got is we've got a website, St. John Business, that you can go to, that is a navigation tool that provides access to a number of different other programs that are available to help businesses in terms of their scaling up and the like.
That's great to know. And deputy, can I ask one follow-up question? I know I'm seven seconds over, eight seconds.
Thank you, Craig.
Sorry, workforce housing. This is something that came up in a growth committee meeting that I meant to follow up with you about months ago. Are we any closer to having, we're one, we're one project away, one billion-dollar project away, from exhausting every resource that we could muster onsite in St. John to house workers who might come here to do the work? And I'm cognizant of the fact that the industrial parks board has been successful enough at getting letters of interest that could be triple that. We could have three projects that are over a billion dollars here, besides the Next Gen project out of Irving. So where are we at on the workforce housing piece? Are we any closer? Are we convening people? I'm just curious.
We've had a number of conversations on that in terms of looking at options for, you know, temporary work camps that could go in areas. So yeah, there's been a variety of things that are being considered and looked at. We're waiting to see the staging of some of these projects that are being talked about, and when they're going to ramp up. But I agree with you, that's an area that we need to be conscious of in terms of some of the temporary housing that's going to be needed.
Okay. Doctor Adwan?
Thank you, deputy. Through to Mr. Beckett. So you kind of have a big question for you, but there's, you've already kind of talked about the talent attraction, but if I look at your four pillars, so development, businesses, tourism, just wondering if there's anything that you're hearing from your seat that St. John is missing? What are we missing? What product or service are we missing? And second question that I have for you, is there anything else that the city could be doing that maybe we're not already to help break down barriers to making sure that we get those things that we need?
Look, in terms of, in terms of what's missing, to me, it's an evolution, because we've got a number of pieces that are quite good in this community, and certainly is a base in terms of quality of life, tremendous. I think the city's making some really good investments over that last little while in terms of some of the community recreation-type infrastructure that's needed. I'd say we're behind where some other communities are. We just went through this, just in terms of even the development of the bid for the Canada Games. We were looking at some of the infrastructure investments that Moncton's made over the last number of years compared to where we are, we're a bit behind. But again, that's, with respect, I know that's been an area that the council's been focused on and looking at some of those types of things. But I found it also interesting in terms of, there was a CBC report just recently that talked about Fredericton and developing a cricket field. That's a good example of where we need to be conscious of where our new population's coming from, and maybe we need to be looking at different types of infrastructure that we haven't in the past, because it's not just a matter of having those facilities so they can play cricket, it's community building. It's where they build their social networks, it's what's going to help them stay over time. So I think it's some of those pieces that I think can be built on. From the city's standpoint, in terms of, in terms of things that we need, I'm going to be really unpopular in some circles on this, you've taken a good first step with the expansion of Spruce Lake Industrial Park. I would say that we are still in a situation where we don't have enough industrial land for where some of the opportunities are. And continued focus and continued investments in that area are going to be needed to really capitalize on some of the opportunities that we're seeing. And look, I know that there's a lot of work being done around other complex issues like the homelessness side of things and other things that are all parts of continuing to build that sort of sense of community pride and safety that we need. We're pleased to see some of the work that council's doing in terms of trying to take some of those, take on some of those actions, but I think they'd be the key areas that I focus on.
You know what, thank you very much. And deputy, if I can just follow up, I just, I totally agree with you, and I think council gets it, parks, recreation, those quality of life items will drive development, drive business here, drive people here. So all of that kind of drives people here, and they do want them in their neighborhoods, right? That's a big thing. And businesses want that, and businesses need that to keep their talent in the city, too. So I think that we're all on board with that, from what I hear around our table. And, you know, and it's, I get frustrated when I hear that Moncton's invested and Fredericton's invested, but you're right, 100%. And the reason why they were able to invest is because they don't have this geographical mass that we do. However, they're getting the same tax dollars. So tax reform, tax reform, tax reform. I'm happy to put money into Parks and Rec to drive that business, to drive that development, and we need the tax reform now, not in three years. But thank you, I'm totally with you, 100%.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Sullivan.
Thanks, deputy. Thanks, Andrew, for the presentation. I guess a few different things. One, something you just said actually reminded me of Wayne Gretzky's line, "Don't go where the puck is, go where the puck is going." Right? You've got to look ahead and be strategic. And I think, I think the plan does that, and I think your organization is good at looking strategically. I do appreciate some of the things on the tourism front. I really like the ambassador program that anybody could sign up for.
I would encourage anybody, it's a great program.
And, you know, I hope you do another push on it, get it out there in the social media. I think our greatest resource is getting everybody on board, because, you know, media nowadays, paid media is less and less, and social media is really where people are consuming. And, you know, I, it's funny, like, I know I pay very, very close attention when I see Envision or anything St. John-related in the paid media pumping up our city. But really, the folks who are coming in on cruise ships and tagging St. John, and a few of our real estate developers and their drones, I think are doing, with respect, a far better job than any of the paid folks of getting the message of St. John out and about. So, you know, going to where the puck is going, I think strategically, we need to be out there and encouraging doing more empowerment of anybody who's got thumbs and a device to be advertising to everybody else to come to St. John.
Yeah, look, I appreciate you raising the ambassador program, because I agree with you, I think it's a great one. But we're trying to push it to actually encourage local residents to go through the program because we think it'll build a better appreciation for what we have here, because not enough people around the community have a good enough appreciation for what we have. And we've tried a couple of social media campaigns to build on that. We did a backyard vacation thing for the last couple of years, where we have people going around and really promoting local events with some prizes, and again, it's really promoting it within the local community.
Yeah, and I think there's real strength in that motivation for the ambassador program. Like, it's multi-level, and again, it's.
because we think it'll build a better appreciation for what we have here. Because not enough people around the community have a, a good enough appreciation for, for, for what we have. And we've, and we've tried a couple of social media campaigns to build on that. We did a, we did a backyard vacation thing for the last couple of years where we have people going around and really promoting local events with some prizes. And, and again, it's, it's really promoting it within the local community.
Yeah. I think there's real strength in, in that motivation for the ambassador program. Like it, it's multi-level. And again, it's not a slick campaign by folks who are paid to do it. If you can empower people and train them and get them to have an appreciation, that army of keyboard warriors working on your behalf.
It's great to know.
One piece, you know, I do need to come back to, you talked about expanding your key performance indicators to going beyond, uh, tax base. But tax base.
Not losing sight of tax base.
It's not in the list anymore.
It, 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 it will be, it still is, is going to be, it's, it is one of our metrics that we've got in. The reason that we've, uh, we've stayed away from the, the tax base growth in terms of this is that there's so many other factors that come into it in terms of then breaking that down into what's real growth versus just an inflationary component. And so that's why we've, we've, we've tended to sort of, uh, really try and hone in on what's the real growth one year.
Perfect, because that's really going to segue because it, it's been easy for us to look at real growth this year, thanks to the lack of anything else that the province has given us, right? So the only thing we have is real growth. And, you know, we talk about, we're not in competition. A rising tide floats all boats, right until we're competing with Moncton and Fredericton for Canada Games for an industrial, for whoever. And, and really, I, I do feel the need to bring up that in real growth in this past year, uh, St. John is at 1.8%. Fredericton's at 2.4 and Moncton's at 3.6. So that's the scorecard. So, you know, as the folks who are our service provider on economic growth, I'm concerned.
And look, and, and that's not lost to, to us in terms of that. I mean, I would say that we play a part in terms of trying to help drive that growth, but it's, but it's only one piece of the puzzle. We, we, but, but absolutely agree that that's an area that we need to be laser focused on. We know, we know who pays the bills at the end of the day.
No, and, and, but I would say, you know, that you are our economic development agency. And so you play a big part. I, I would say the lead part. And I, I would also throw this out that if, if there are things that you think are important, because I don't know if council hears directly from you through the year that, you know, here's something we're working on that we would really like to perhaps nudge council to move because it would support what we are doing. Then we need to have that conversation.
Yeah, and we've tried, over this past year, we've, we've been to the growth committee three or four times, Deputy. We're, we're, we're trying to, to, to get more regular in terms of updates, but you're right. We, we need to be more visible in terms of key things that we need on an ongoing basis.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, thank you, Councilor. Councilor Ogden?
Yeah, Andrew, when you mentioned social media, we moved the Marco Polo about a month ago and I had three days where we had cranes and everything, cost probably a hundred fifty grand. We had six hundred thousand views in those three days. I didn't see Envision St. John around, but, uh, we had six hundred thousand views of moving that ship. And, and, and we're pretty well, we're about a year and a half ahead of schedule now. But that's the power of it. So I would suggest to you, I mean, I've seen, you know, we've planted five million Marigolds at forty-six sites a year and clean five hundred sites. I've never seen Envision St. John at any of these things. And, um, I would suggest to you for them to reach out more to people. When we restored Loyola's house, it was a half a million. Now, it was Enterprise St. John at the time, but they didn't show up either. So I think, I, I think economies often grow organically. And that leads to my other thing is that I didn't see education up there. We're about a quarter of what Fredericton and Moncton have, as you know. We're in pretty good shape in community college, but we're about a quarter of what Moncton and Fredericton have. And I listened to the new owners of, uh, Brunswick Square and Brunswick Tower the other day, and they don't know what to do with Brunswick Square. It's passed on so many hands. And we used to have about fifteen to twenty thousand more people uptown. Now, it was a different time. We had seven department stores. My family had the last one and it was hard to hang on. But the buildings are still there. So Brunswick Square is empty, Brunswick Tower is empty, Market Square is empty. All the upper floors are empty. And, uh, and all kinds of upper floors are empty. A counselor twenty years ago tried to do something with the upper floors. Sterling Brown still talks to me. And in a year and a half, we're going to have seven schools empty, seven buildings empty. And so the infrastructure is still there. I think the cruise ship visitors, when we had the Moonlight Parade, show us that, you know, we pack uptown, that people absolutely love uptown. And when I put the Atlantic Football League together, I met with the presidents of McGill, Concordia, Toronto, Dalhousie and St. Mary's. And they all said, if you want to grow a university, go uptown. That's the magic. Like the guy from Concordia said, you go this way. They built their stadium outside, but he said, you've got to grow uptown. And here we have all this, these buildings empty. We could turn around uptown St. John, plus educate a very, uh, a population that's very poor. And, uh, we get away from buses and everything because we often hear, I met, I was out at UMB St. John the other day and they were saying about the bus problem. Well, if people were walking, it's more environmentally friendly and then we don't have to worry about this addition to the students. So I think you could do more with education. Moncton now has four universities and two community colleges. And, uh, we got to play in that ballpark.
Good. Thank you.
Totally, totally agree, Councilor. And, and if you read our full plan, post-secondary education is in there.
Councilor Adwan.
Just briefly, Deputy, I just wanted to make mention to back, uh, Mr. Beckett on something. A lot of what you do at Envision, when it comes to tourism and advertising for St. John, we don't see it because you're trying to bring people in from outside the city. So I just wanted to make mention of that. Sometimes it doesn't seem like the messaging is there because it's not coming to us. It's going to Quebec, it's going to Ontario, it's going there. But you have meetings that we get invited to where you will showcase this if anybody wants to go. And I know that we're usually invited.
And our, and our impression level on the campaigns we have is very high.
Really good campaigns. You do really good marketing campaigns.
Okay, thank you, Councilor. I'm just going to wrap us up here, Andrew. I think that, uh, Envision St. John is doing a terrific job. Uh, I think that, uh, you know, yes, St. John was behind. We had a lot of issues on the cities that now. We cleaned off our plate and now we're ahead in a lot of areas. Financially, we're a lot better off today than we've ever been. And the city's growing. Yes, it's growing at 1.8, smart growth, I call it, but that's 1.8. I think that, you know, uh, people come to St. John and they move here. I know my neighbor moved from West to Moncton, from B.C. to Moncton, took two, two day trips to St. John and bought a house here. So St. John has a story to tell and we're not telling it as well as we could. Okay? But the people that are coming here are seeing it. One of the areas that I have a concern with, and it was brought up tonight, is the airport. Okay? I know that we've got a terrific board out there. Okay? We've got people working really hard and visions working really hard. See a couple here tonight. But I'm wondering, because I just recently heard that other airports in New Brunswick, like Moncton and Fredericton, are getting some support that St. John's not getting. And is that O and B? Is that true? And what, if it is, do you know why we're not getting it?
That's the, that's the Pal Airlines announcement that has, uh, Moncton, Fredericton, Charlottetown, Sydney and Halifax as part of it. And St. John is not part of that.
And why is that?
I suspect it's because of the pass can service that we're operating and, and we're holding ourselves out for future considerations at this point in time.
For future considerations. I hope that future comes back. Listen, thanks very, very much for being here tonight, Andrew. It's always a pleasure to have you in and, uh, it's great to have Envision doing our job first.
Thanks very much, your worship, Councilors.
Okay, next item, common prayer.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Next, we have item eight point two on the agenda and this is another presentation entitled Integrated Health Initiative from University of New Brunswick. And we have Dr. Mazerol and Dr. Hoff here to present.
Well, welcome, Dr. Mazerol, and congratulations on your, uh, your future. I know you're heading to, I think it's Australia, isn't it? In the spring, so thank you.
Mixed emotions, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I can imagine it is, but I want to thank you for all your, your service with UMB. It's been, it's been really good. I know you do great or whatever you do next.
Great. Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor and members of council. Thank you for your opportunity to, uh, to talk to you about the Integrated Health Initiative. And I'm also joined by our Provost, Petra Hoff. I'll just give a quick introduction and hand over to her. Want to acknowledge other members of the UMB community here in St. John, as well as, uh, former board chairs and, uh, head of the fundraising initiative for the Integrated Health Initiative. So again, thank you for being here. It's a wonderful opportunity to share an update about the Integrated Health Initiative. Uh, and we offer our deepest appreciation for the support of this council, for this really important project. I do want to just quickly say, um, in terms of situating this project, it's, uh, we see it as a good example. We see ourselves as the University of New Brunswick for New Brunswick. And that applies to here in St. John, the university for St. John. And what that means is we really are concerned about how do we make a difference for this community? Whether it's in health or working with the Port of St. John, which is another major pillar project that we have as a university. But so this project for us, the Integrated Health Initiative, we think it's a, it's a project that's been around for a number of years. And it really is a St. John success story. It's a strategic priority for our whole university, but it's, it's, uh, benefiting from resources why, university wide, UMB wide. So we're looking at this as our opportunity to help, um, do our part to help the health system. I had a chance to visit it today, I will. It was a kind of experiential kind of thing, slipping in the shower and experiencing our healthcare system. And, uh, it's, uh, you know, it was a metaphor for me to say, we have work to do and we are working at the university in the Integrated Health Initiative to try to make a difference. This sit- is situated in what we call our research grand challenges. We have four at UMB and one is building a healthier New Brunswick. And the Integrated Health Initiative is nested in that, in that program. So I think we all know that we have a challenging healthcare system and a health, health situation in our province. And we are working with our arms rolled up with this Integrated Health Initiative to do our part. It requires partnerships. It requires more people, more education, programs, research and innovation, which, uh, our provost will touch on. And indeed, uh, community engagement. This Integrated Health Initiative, as I said, does illustrate this one UMB approach. We've got, uh, eighty percent of our universities in Fredericton, twenty percent in St. John. We're looking to grow both campuses and we are. We're one of, fortunately, one of the few universities in Atlantic Canada still growing. Most of them are in the red. We are not. And in part because we're growing our programs and disproportionately growing our health programs, particularly here on the St. John campus. So we're trying to bring together expertise, trying to bring together new programs. It's an aspirational project, uh, and we want to make sure it moves from ideas to aspiration to action. And, uh, we're going to hear some progress where we are as a strategic priority. As all of you know, uh, this initiative, the Integrated Health Initiative is nested on our Tucker Park campus. And what we think is really exciting about that is that it's co-located with Dalhousie Medicine and BCC and the, and the regional hospital, which is, we think that, you know, truly the best hospital in the province. So it is part of a health ecosystem and we, working together, we have the stronger together metaphor. But indeed, we all have a role to play to strengthen healthcare in New Brunswick and the healthcare system. So in closing, we do, um, we think there's a really exciting future in St. John and I recognize and concur with your comments about St. John and it's a fantastic city and I can see why. I was talking to our, one of our emeritus chancellors last week about the St. John-Federicton difference. He grew up in St. John, this is Dick Curry. And he had some very strong positive words to say about this community and I concurred with him. So, but as a university, we have to do our part to say, how do we make a difference? Whether it's in poverty, health, education, economic development, cultural vitality. And we know with the Integrated Health Initiative, we're building something special, but we want to have it to be something impactful and something we can all be proud of for years to come. So with that, I'll hand over to my colleague, Petra.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, as its core, so I'm going to provide the update now before handing it back over to, uh, our president, Paul Mazerol. So at its core, the IHI is about solving health and social challenges while strengthening our economy. And we're doing this by educating the next generation of health reformers, by creating talent ready to shape the future of healthcare and by better meeting the needs of our communities. So our Bachelor of Health program, which is unique in Eastern Canada, integrates science and arts and business. And this is a very unique component. And, uh, it prepares our students for leadership roles across the entire health sector. This fall, we have two hundred twenty students enrolled in this program, a number that continues to grow year over year. Fifteen students are completing practicum this term in the community. So giving back to the community, right, while they're in their education program. And, um, we are also working on a co-op option to give students more experience in healthcare settings. We are also proud to report that five of our recent graduates were accepted into medical schools across the country, so here in St. John, but also at other, um, schools across the country. Other students have entered graduate programs in public health and related disciplines or moved seamlessly into the workforce. So the IHI has also enabled new partnerships such as a strategic alliance with the Canadian College of Health Leaders, giving our students a pathway to the certified health executive designation. A newly launched school of integrated health led by inaugural dean, Dr. Lisa Best, is now home to the Bachelor of Health program and soon will also be home of a master's in public health. There, uh, the team is growing, so with experts like Maggie Brown in health analytics, Tony Reiman with Canadian Cancer Society and Dr. Jennifer Woodland, uh, in psychology and the exempl- exemplify the excellence and collaboration that defines the IHI. The work that we are doing aligns directly with the city's strategic vision, from vibrancy and prosperity to inclusion, sustainability and service excellence. Through the IHI, St. John is becoming a hub of health innovation, one of the fastest growing economic sectors globally. We are attracting researchers, educators and professionals who want to live, work and invest here in St. John. Our students and graduates represent homegrown talent, the next generation of health leaders, strengthening the local labor market and helping young people stay and build their futures here. Our progress includes over two hundred new students, which brings us on track with the five hundred that we wanted to achieve in undergraduate and graduate programs, which would be a twenty-seven percent increase in St. John population. Sixty-three million Health and Social Innovation Centers, I was going to type on the slide, I'm sorry for that, is currently under construction, injecting sixty-three million in cross-output and forty million in payroll into the greater St. John economy. We're also increasing external research funding from one point six million currently to over four point five million annually with the additional researchers that we're getting here in St. John. The Health and Social Innovation Center is both a symbol and a catalyst for growth. It is already attracting students, faculty and professionals who are putting down roots here, individuals and families who are becoming part of the St. John community. When complete, the building will be a sixty-five thousand square foot state-of-the-art facility built to lead green standards, fully accessible and connected to the campus tunnel system. Uh, we have an active campaign cabinet and it was already mentioned that we have the chair of our campaign cabinet here, filled always community leaders who deeply care about UMB, the IHI and St. John. And they're helping us to raise the much-needed funds to close the funding gap. The site will also include a healing garden that honors indigenous history and reflects UMB's commitment to reconciliation. And of course, the subcontractors in the construction are, um, local and regional companies and they are creating jobs and partnerships and new expertise right here in St. John. The city's commitment to inclusion and community is deeply shared by UMB. Much of IHI's research directly addresses St. John's most pressing challenges, from child and youth mental health to aging transitions to poverty reduction and child rights. We have researchers like Siba Vakri, Shelley Doucette, and now also like a new one that we're in the hiring process for the Shannon Family Chair in Aging Transitions. And we are soon going in the market to look for research chair in youth mental health. These experts and their teams are shaping the Panel Center for Integrated Health Research, where all IHI research chairs will be housed in the new building, thanks to a leadership gift from the panel family. And then through Promise Partnership, we are strengthening St. John's social fabric, helping local K-12 students overcome barriers, build digital skills and connect with mentors from UMB and MBCC. And this is a success story that started fifteen years ago here in St. John and is now expanding to Moncton, demonstrating that power of community collaboration and the lasting change that begins in St. John. Your focus on sustainability and collaboration mirrors how IHI operates. Our collective goals are ambitious but clear. Give more young people a reason to stay here and thrive here in St. John and in New Brunswick. Conduct data-driven research that informs evidence-based health and social policy. So with each milestone from new programs and partnerships to groundbreaking research, we are moving towards establishing St. John as a center of excellence for health innovation. St. John focuses on service excellence and quality of life is reflected in every part of our initiative. The Health and Social Innovation Center will not only serve as an academic facility, but as a community hub, connecting healthcare providers, entrepreneurs, researchers to accelerate innovation. While our focus is health, IHI also celebrates creativity and culture. We bring together people from across disciplines, scientists, policies. We bring together people from across disciplines, scientists, policymakers, artists, because innovation thrives where ideas intersect. That energy contributes to St. John's reputation as a vibrant, creative city of ideas and impact. And those renderings, there's one here that shows the New Health and Social Innovation Centre, what it will look like once completed next summer. And its beautiful, bright, inspiring space is designed to support collaboration and research and student success. And we have also picture where it's, oops, no. Oh, there's one missing, sorry. I had also picture from one of your own members, who was coming out for a visit and was looking at where we are today. So with this rendering, I'm handing it back over to Dr. Mazerol for closing your presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Petra. I'll be, look, I'll be really brief. It's just a chance to say in closing, you know, thank you to this council for your support of this, our university, on this really exciting initiative. It's been early and ongoing support. It's an important project, as Petra shared you an update, across so many different areas, research, program and development, new students in our community. The capital campaign to support this iconic building, it is a fundamentally beautiful building, that we're excited about. The Promise Partnership work and the leadership of this campus and this city and Promise Partnership is extraordinary. And we've been able to grow the funding and support of that, to see it as a New Brunswick-wide initiative, to look at digital skills as well through the support of the McKinney Institute helped us to achieve that. But all of that to say, we recognize the challenges of health and healthcare in a province like New Brunswick. We have a role to play, not by ourselves. We need to work in partnership with councils. Invision's been terrific. We see health innovation as an opportunity that'll be working with partners such as David Elias and Horizon and Invision. We have a role to play to spurn, you know, to push forward the new health entrepreneurs. IHI is another vehicle to do that. So with that, thank you very much. And we're happy to take any questions from yourself or the council.
Thank you, Paul. Councillor Radwan, has a question.
Thank you, Deputy. Yes, through to Dr. Mazerol. First of all, congratulations, this is incredible. It's really good to see. As somebody who's alumni, I've spent many a day sitting on the campus envisioning more, lots more. I'm sure you have a strategic plan, just wondering if you're hoping to continue growth on the campus. And hopefully you get some good support with your fundraising initiative. Hopefully this will kind of help boost that a little bit. And, you know, there's a lot of gaps. You know, we heard from Mr. Beckett that there's a lot of gaps in education, which of course you, you definitely have teachers coming out of UMB, which is wonderful. Another big gap that we have at the city, and I've got to put this plug in for Commissioner Popenroth, is we need planners badly. And so the planners generally, people will go to Toronto, take their planning there, and then Ontario keeps them. So it's something that I would love for UMB to consider, because I think there's huge opportunities here when it comes to planning and architecture, trying to get some things going so that we can help Invision.
Sure. I'll just make a quick comment. Our strategic vision is UMB toward 2030. And it envisions a 50% increase of our, or it's actually larger than that, increase of our student population. We started at about 9,500 when I came six and a half years ago. We're at about 10,867 right now headcount. We have been affected by the international student changes.
Yeah.
But we're growing both campuses. And this campus in particular, we are growing a lot of health programs, social work. We're working on pharmacy, we're working on optometry. So we have some exciting things in development.
Happy to see you taking on social work. That's been a big gap, too.
Yeah, social work's been great. And we're looking at, you know, logistics, urban planning is an area that I think is underdone in Atlantic Canada.
Absolutely.
And so we want to explore things, because there's probably, Petra, correct me if I'm wrong, in the last two years and forward, there's about 30 or 35 programs in development.
So at UMB in total, we're looking at about 40 new programs, undergraduate, certificates, postgraduate, reskilling and upskilling. We're very closely working together with governments to see like, what is the need of the province and ensure that we're getting there. Social work was one of those initiatives. We have the first cohort graduating in May next year of the Bachelor of Social Work. And we're working now on the Masters in Social Work for St. John here and also on a Masters in Public Health, research-based and course-based.
That's wonderful to hear. And just a follow-up question, what kind of impact has UMB had from the international student numbers going down?
Well, it's a great question. So around Atlantic Canada, there's been about $164 million decline. UMB's experienced about a 30% decline. So, so we've lost millions of dollars. And it's, we're very fortunate to still be above water. But there's been lots of internal pain that we've been doing, because our board won't accept a deficit budget, and we agree. So unlike most universities in Atlantic Canada, Dahaunia's down 20 million, Memorial 10 million. So we have taken a big hit, and it'll stay with us for a few years. We're, 24% of our students are international. Or, sorry, 22, it was 25%. So we are taking hits disproportionately at the graduate level as well. But we're committed to this region, we're committed to growth. We want to be a 15,000-student university. Part of that will be online. But we think we can easily accommodate another 1,000 students in St. John.
Well, hopefully those numbers can go up, because I can tell you from my experience, it was the international students that really helped enhance my experience at UMB. I learnt, I hate to say, probably more from them than I did in the classroom. So, and it's actually helped me even sit here today.
To your point, our MBA student numbers are down about 70% in one year.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I'll just share this with you just briefly. I've got three grown children. Two of them, probably 20, 25 years ago, I took out to UMB, okay? The third one, who spent 15 years or 12 years in nursing, decided to go out there and get her LPN, which she did. I see a huge difference from the time I went out there with the first two to my third one. Thanks to Trevor Holder, actually, I must say. He, in his former career, actually put me onto the right people, which was the campus out there at Tucker Park. So you guys are doing amazing work out there. And this IHI is going to be very, very impressive. Thanks for coming in and sharing it with us.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, common clerk.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Next on the agenda is item 10.1. Actually, that was removed from the agenda. The next item is 10.2. And this is a municipal plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment, solar energy development, third reading.
Okay, over to you.
Yes, thank you, Deputy and members of council. Before you this evening for third reading is an application for a municipal plan amendment and zoning bylaw text amendment submitted by St. John Energy for an amendment that would permit the development of solar energy development in the rural zone. The application received first and second reading on October 6th, following the required public hearing. And I can confirm that all legislative requirements of the Community Planning Act have been met. And the item is now before you to move forward with third reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Over to you, common clerk.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So for this item, we require four motions of council. So those would be, first, to give third reading to the municipal plan by approving a third reading by summary and then a third reading by title. Next would be the same two motions for the zoning. So first, we're looking for a municipal plan, first reading, third reading by summary.
Okay, can I get a motion for summary? Councillor Darling, secondaire, Councillor Sullivan, on the question. All in favor, saying aye. Opposed, if any, the motion's carried. Next item.
And this is a law to amend a municipal plan bylaw. And the summary for this is, the amendments to the municipal plan would permit solar energy development as a by-right use in the rural zone. The application includes amendments to the rural resource designation within the municipal plan, as well as amendments to the rural and green energy zones. The proposed amendments would facilitate the development of solar energy projects on RU-zoned sites. Similar to resource-based land uses such as agriculture, fishery, and forestry, this change would support the establishment of renewable energy infrastructure within rural areas while streamlining the approval process.
Yes, sir, I was supposed to recuse myself for this vote. And I was just typing away here and when we were going through it. So do we need to retake the vote? Because I was not here for the original vote. This is third reading, right? Apologies.
Thank you. Yes, if the council member could recuse themselves and... Maybe I'll just get you to call that vote again.
Okay. Councillor Sullivan, Councillor Darling, they moved it, secondaire. On the, on the motion, all in favor? Opposed, if any, motions carried. One back in.
Well, no, we have to go through the other motions.
All right.
Yeah. So next, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So next, we would require a motion to approve third reading by title for the municipal plan.
Can I get a motion for third reading by title? Councillor Sullivan, second by Councillor Law, on the question. All in favor? Again, motion's carried, thank you.
A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw. Next would be the summary, approve third reading summary for the zoning bylaw.
I wish to approve the summary bylaw. Councillor Stewart, Councillor Sullivan, on the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any, motions carried, thank you.
And this is a law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John. The amendments to the zoning bylaw would permit solar energy developments as a by-right use in rural zones. The application includes amendments to the rural resource designation within the municipal plan, as well as amendments to the rural and green energy zones. The proposed amendments would facilitate the development of solar energy projects on RU-zoned sites. Similar to resource-based land uses such as agriculture, fishery, and forestry, this change would support the establishment of renewable energy infrastructure within the rural areas while streamlining the approval process. And now, third reading for the zoning by title.
Okay, Councillor Ogden on third reading by title. And Councillor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any, motions carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Okay. Next item, common clerk.
And council members, we're finished? Next on the agenda is item 11.1, a notice of motion submitted by Councillor Norton with respect to the scheduling of a public presentation by Top Corner Hockey, St. John.
Okay, Councillor Norton, do you want to read your motion into the minutes, please?
Yes, certainly, certainly, Deputy. The proposed motion is that the clerk be directed to schedule a public presentation from representatives of Top Corner Hockey, St. John, at an upcoming meeting of common council at a date mutually agreeable to the presenters and the clerk's office. And further, that the clerk provide appropriate notice, notice and include the presentation on the official agenda in accordance with the standard council, council procedures.
Thank you, councillor. Next item, oh, Councillor Sullivan, did you?
Deputy, on this item, I'd be willing to move a motion that we suspend the rules and just move it forward tonight.
Okay. You have a second? Okay, Councillor Law? So we need about two, three majority?
You two, there you go.
Okay. Okay, so on the question, all in favor, moving it forward? Opposed, if any? Okay, motion's carried unanimously. Here you go, councillor. All right, next item, council, common clerk.
Your worship, but now, now you could vote on the motion itself, if you want. So we suspended the rules, so we can now discuss the motion. And so now, if council chose to, they could vote on the proposal by Councillor Norton.
All right, so, Councillor Norton, Councillor Sullivan, you going to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's on the floor, all in favor of the motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Procedural question. I thought that we could just get the proponents to submit, to present. I don't know why we need to make a motion about it. Is that true? It's you, or? I don't know why we need this.
It wasn't part of the correspondence, I guess. It was brought through a different mode. But yeah, we've had correspondents asking to do that.
Right. I guess just, I know, in future reference for proponents. I thought that it was, the process was to go apply to the clerk to speak? I, just am confused.
So the council member's correct, but there are two methods. So typically, a group would write into council, as you would see on your agenda, and request. There's a form for that. But council members can bring in a motion at any time, requesting a group. It's less common, but there are the two different methods.
Okay, just know what to tell people, that's all, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we had the vote. Councillor Radwan.
And Deputy, I'm just kind of curious through Jonathan Taylor, I think, do they still have to give you like a presentation in advance and everything? Yeah?
That's correct. So the same rules of the procedural bylaw would apply, which is all presenters are asked to submit their presentation along with the other agenda materials by Wednesday, 4:00 PM. So it would go on your council kit.
Okay. And we already had the vote, so we're good to go. Okay, all right.
So we suspended the rules?
Okay.
And now we moved the motion.
Okay. So we moved the motion, we seconded the motion. On the question, all in favor? The quicker the better. Anyway, okay, thanks very much, everybody. Next item, common clerk.
Deputy Mayor, just to confirm, that was a unanimous?
That was unanimous, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda would be item 17.1 from Committee of the Whole. And this item was a recommended appointments to committees. And I can read these out for council's consideration. So the recommendation from Committee of the Whole, having met earlier this evening, is for the St. John Arts Board to appoint Marcella Torres and reappoint Anne Moat each for three-year terms.
Okay, can I get a motion to?